So open your Bibles to Revelation, Chapter 6. And we're going to finish out Chapter 6 today, maybe go into Chapter 7 a little bit because Chapter 6 is very, very heavy, ends with a very heavy question, and then Chapter 7 answers that heavy question. So I don't want to leave you hanging until next week. So let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I pray that... Lord, there's scary things that are happening. We look at the world and we're filled with fear. And we can't help but be filled with fear because we see these things and we have no power and control over them, but you do. And Lord, as we see your word of judgment, righteous judgment, we also know that judgment doesn't have the last word, that grace and forgiveness does. So Lord, in the midst of all of these things, let us not lose heart. Let us fear, but not fear anything but you, and that reverence for you, that hope that we have in Christ. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. So as we talk about this question of all of these things that are happening in our world, and we ask the question, what is God doing in the midst of it all? We really struggle, I really struggle with the fact that God is working in and through these things. And I think that there are a lot of times where certainly I would say, maybe it is that God didn't cause it, maybe it's He allowed it, but then God did cause it in some cases. And we really struggle with knowing what is really going on here. And so what I want you to see is, I want you to see a couple of things with me this morning. So turn in your Bibles to Leviticus, Chapter 26. So this is also in Deuteronomy, Chapter 28. And probably one of the, I mean, I always seem like I say this, but one of the most pivotal places in the Old Testament for understanding the Old Testament is Leviticus, Chapter 26, Deuteronomy, Chapter 28. So we're going to go in Leviticus, Chapter 26, we're going to go to verse 14 especially, but from Leviticus, Chapter 26 through 13. This is where God is saying, if you remain in covenant faithfulness with me as your one and only God, this is what's going to happen to you. These are the blessings that are going to come about. Then in verses 14 and following, God is going to say, if you don't, these are the bad things that are going to happen. Like this is what's going to happen. Okay? Now again, ask yourself this question. Is God allowing this, or is He causing this? Okay? So here's what happens. So verse 14, "But if you will not listen to me and will not do all these commandments, if you spurn my statutes and your soul abhors my rules, so that you will not do all my commandments, but break my covenant, then I will do this to you. I will visit you with panic, with wasting disease, and fever that consumes the eyes and makes the heart ache." And then we'll just keep going. Verse 17, "I will set my face against you, and you shall be struck down before your enemies." So your enemies are going to prevail against you. You're going to be beaten in battle. Verse 20, "And your strength shall be spent in vain, for your land shall not yield its increase, and the trees of the land shall not yield their fruit." So your harvest is not, you're not going to have a bountiful harvest. You're not going to have enough food to eat. Verse 25, middle of the verse, "I will send pestilence among you, and you shall be delivered into the hand of the enemy." Verse 26, "When I break your supply of bread..." God is, again, the question is, is God allowing this, or is He causing it? Is He doing it? He's doing it. He's not just allowing these things to happen. He's the one that's causing it. Okay? He's, "I will do this." Okay? Verse 31, "And I will lay your city's wastes, and I will make your sanctuaries desolate, and I will not smell your pleasing aromas." So on and on and on, all of these curses basically. So if you don't keep my commandments, if you don't remain in covenant faithfulness with me, this is what's going to happen. Okay? And these are the things I'm going to do. Verse 42, "Then if they come back and they repent," God says, "then I will remember my covenant with Jacob, and I will remember my covenant with Isaac, and my covenant with Abraham, and I will remember the land." So grace always has the last word. Okay? So why is God doing all of these things? What do you think? Why do you think He is saying, "I'm going to do all of these things to you"? Yes? Okay? So not just to punish us for what we've done wrong, but to help us to think outside of ourselves and for the sake of others. Yes? Okay? Anybody else? Why do you think God's doing this? Yes? To wake us up? Yeah, sometimes, I don't know about you, but sometimes I need a much bigger two by four upside the head to get my attention. Do you? Sometimes? Yep. So it's getting our attention. Why else? What do you think? He's setting up some guidelines? Yes. Is Father disciplining his children? To appreciate what He gave us? Yes? Right. So free will is a big deal to God, is what I'm hearing you say. Okay? All right? We're going to talk about that? Yep. That is a good one. So that God is sovereign. I'm in charge. Right? So in the Old Testament, the job of the prophet, many times we think that the job of the prophet is to predict the future, right? Many times, matter of fact, the majority of the time is the voice of the prophet is to say, "Y'all sinned. Repent." Okay? So the people are going around and they're planting their crops, and they're like, "What gives? We're in a drought. Why aren't we having enough crops?" And the prophet's there to say, "The reason that's happening is you need to repent." This is exactly what God said would happen if you have abandoned your covenant faithfulness with Him. That's what will happen. So the prophet comes in to call the people to repentance. And so all of these things are basically happening, and the prophet's saying, "Well, you shouldn't be surprised at these things that happened. Look what has happened. You're persecuting the poor. You have gone after other gods. You have done all of these things." And so God told you that this is what He would do in order to call you back to Himself. You follow? So let me give you just a really quick example of this. So turn in your Bibles to Deuteronomy, Chapter 30, verse 19. So this is, so you can read again, Deuteronomy, Chapter 28. That's the blessings and curses. And then in Chapter 30, verse 19, God says this. He says, "I call heaven and earth to witness against you today, that I have set before you life and death, blessing and curse. Therefore choose life, that you and your offspring may live." So there is life, everlasting life, we would say, beneath the covenant. Okay? That covenant with God. Outside that covenant, there's death. So it's not this idea of, well, God is just, you know, He just has to be a big deal. But the reason He does these things and sends pestilence is because He knows that that path leads to where? To destruction and death. So in order to get our attention, He not only causes these things, but He is in the midst of it all the time. Okay? So then, so He's calling heaven and earth to as witnesses against us. So then turn in your Bibles, Isaiah, Chapter 1. This is verse 2. So Isaiah, Chapter 1, verse 2, Isaiah writes, "Hear, O heavens, and give ear, O earth." What is Isaiah doing right here, right now? Isaiah, as the prophet, is like a prosecuting attorney. And here's what he's doing. "For my first witness, I call heaven, the heavens, to testify against my people. For my second witness, I call to the stand all of the earth, to testify against my people." And so Isaiah, his whole message is God's covenant. You have broken the covenant with God. Repent and return to the Lord. That's his message. In 66 chapters is repent and come back to the covenant that He has made with you. Make sense? Questions on that? Um, so certainly not the, like, I'm calling heaven and earth to testify against you, not that. But the point is, okay, is that what's happening with, what's happening, we saw these horses last week. So we've got a white horse, we've got a red horse, we've got a black horse, and we've got a pale horse. What is God doing in the midst of all of these horses? One brings tyranny, that's the white horse. The red horse is murder. The black horse is economic instability, and the pale horse is death. What is God doing in the midst of all of those? The same thing that He's been doing the whole time. And that is what? Calling people to repentance. Calling people to come to Him. That's what He's doing. So what I want you to see is, I want you to see that what God has been doing way back when is no different than what He's doing now. Well, I guess I wouldn't say hear it from me. I would just say wrestle with the word, right? Is that God is working in these things, and this is what we're going to struggle with in Revelation. And the question that we should be asking is, hey, what gives? What about me? I'm in the church. I believe in you. Like, why are all of these things happening to me? Like, are there not benefits from being in the church? Right? I mean, we're going to wrestle with this, that we're going through all of these things just like everybody else. Now, some people are going to say, "No, you don't worry about that, because guess what? Eventually, you're going to get what? You're going to get sucked up in the rapture." That's what people say. And this is, the story of Revelation is going to be, no, we go through it just the same. And we go through it, why? Because we have a message that God has entrusted to us, and that is repent and trust Jesus in the midst of it all. Okay? All right. Additional questions there? Yes? So the answer to that is yes. So they are primarily addressing God's people, right? But in Isaiah, there's a section that's called the oracles against the nations. So Isaiah is speaking a word of judgment to Israel's enemies. But then what's shocking is, if you're Israel, you're going to be thinking, "Yeah, you tell them, Isaiah. Yeah, you tell them, Isaiah. Yeah, 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 yeah." But then at the end of it, guess what? Isaiah has an oracle against the nation of Israel. Like, whoa, 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 wait a minute. I thought we were the, I thought we were people that, I thought we were the chosen people. Right? And that's shocking, that God has an oracle against His own people. Okay? That makes sense? All right. Other questions? So I want to introduce you to a thought here, and that's this. So there's a kind of philosophical word, and that word is the word theodicy. So you, your children, your grandchildren, your neighbors, your friends, this is what they're doing. The theodicy is this. It's the question is, if God is all-powerful and all-loving, why does evil exist? Ever heard that question before? So what's the, what is the, what is the common, how do people reconcile this question? Yes? Okay, it's our fault. So therefore, why does evil exist? God allowed it to happen. Why? Because God loves free will so much. Is that comforting to you? It's not comforting to me. So God is going to allow all of these things to happen just because He wants people to have free will. To me, that sounds like a God who says, "It's not my problem." There's nowhere in the Scriptures where God says, "Not my problem." Every moment, God is saying, "It's my problem, and I will solve it. And I am solving it, and I will solve it in the person and work of Jesus Christ." That's the story of the Scriptures. How else do people reconcile this? How do people in the world outside the church reconcile this? Well, number one, they'll just say, "Oh, there's no God, because everything's random." Right? They'll say that. Yes? Sure. Okay, say more about that. That God doesn't see evil the way we see it. Yeah. Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, totally understand what you're saying. You're saying that God looks, we see evil, and we think of it just as evil. God looks at it, has maybe a little bit different perspective on it. That's kind of what you're saying. And totally understand that. I think the challenge is, and maybe this isn't what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you ever find yourself in a hospital with, let's say, a parent who is mourning the death of a child, please don't ever, ever, ever speak Romans 8:28 over that situation. You know, "Well, God works all things together for those who love Him and are called according to His purpose." Please don't say that. What do we say in that moment? What we say in that moment is, "Death sucks. It's terrible." 1 Corinthians says that death is an enemy. And what we say is, we say, "Thanks be to God, that in the person and work of Jesus Christ, He has conquered it for you and for your child. That's the only hope that I have to give you, and that's the only hope that you need." So there are moments that we do have to be able to call things, we have to call a spade a spade. Right? And yet, yet we can see, to Walt's point, that maybe there's these moments in our life that was really painful, that we called evil 20 years ago, but then we look back on it, and we say, "God, thank you for getting me out of that mess that I got myself in again." Right? So I get that. Right? So it's tough, and we're always constantly wrestling with, "God, what are you doing in the midst of all of that?" Okay? How else do people answer this question? Well, people in the church also answer it, say, well, simply, maybe God's not all-loving. Maybe He's not good. Maybe, you know, maybe what's happening is God kind of has a mean streak in Him, and He's kind of like, "Let's see how they deal with this now." Right? Look at the Book of Job, right? We kind of think that God's kind of messing with Him. He's kind of got this puppet on a string, right? Is that what's happening? Sometimes people say, "If God is all-loving and all-powerful," well, maybe the conclusion is, maybe He's just not all-powerful. Maybe He could, oh man, He would really love to, but He just can't. Right? That's how people, yes, reconcile that. Amen. Amen. That's right. So He's holy, and He hates evil. Yes? Right? Okay? So yes? You know, that's a lot of times, that's probably the best thing you can say, because here's the thing. One of the challenges is that we ask the question, why is God doing these things? Revelation, well, it's going to provide some kind of answer. And the answer is, because God loves people, and He desires all people to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. That's what we've got. Okay? But when we think about the Book of, like, the Book of Job, why is God doing all of these things? Job doesn't answer, the book does not answer the question that we have. It just leaves the question hanging there. And even Job, if you read the book, it's long, and I get it, even Job, finally, he has this audience with Almighty God, and Job's got all these questions, right? And then he has this audience with God, and guess what he does? Never mind. You're God, I'm not. Right? Yes? Right. Say more about, it's a part of your relationship with your own God. What do you mean by that? Okay, so I want you to say this for everybody to hear, because I think it's really important. What she's saying is, she's saying, when you deal with these things, apart from a relationship with Jesus, that thing that is happening kind of becomes your identity and your God. And, but, but in a relationship with Jesus, when these bad things happen, it causes us to run to Him. Is that what you're saying? Really, really important. And that is something that is, that God causes in our lives all the time. Remember C.S. Lewis says, you know, "God whispers in times of good times, but in our suffering, He's shouting at us." Right? It's very true. And I think there's parts of your life, my life, that I can say, "Yeah, that is true." All right. There's one other place I wanted to, I wanted us to go. I can't remember where it is. So never mind. Let's go over to, let's go to Revelation, Chapter 6. Actually, before we go there, when we think about, what time is it? When we think about, when you think about the end of the world, the return of Jesus, do you think about that in positive terms or negative terms? You think positive, right? How does the Bible speak of the day of the Lord? Okay, wailing and gnashing of teeth. So I want you to just see this here. So turn in your Bibles to Amos, Chapter 5, in the Old Testament. Daniel, Hosea, Amos. So kind of in the middle, after the major prophets. So this is Daniel, Chapter 5, verse 18. Amos, Amos, Chapter 5, verse 18. So it says to you this, "God says, 'Woe to you who desire the day of the Lord.'" So the day of the Lord is kind of a shorthand for saying the battle of God. Why would you have the day of the Lord? "It is darkness and not light, as if a man fled from a lion and a bear met him, or went into the house and leaned his hand against the wall and a serpent bit him." So this is the, this is the day of the Lord. Now, let's look at Mark, Chapter 13. So this is Jesus talking about the day of the Lord. So Mark, Chapter 13, verse 24. Says, "But in those days, after the tribulation, after that tribulation, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light, and the stars will be falling from heaven, and the powers in the heavens will be shaken; and then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power and glory; and then He will send out His angels and gather His elect from the four winds, from the ends of the earth to the ends of heaven." So this is a, this is a terrifying scene. Okay? 2 Peter talks about it as being refined with fire. Okay? So this idea of the coming day of the Lord, it is a, it is a terrifying thing. And Revelation is going to give us that in some vivid detail. All right? So now turn in your Bibles to Revelation, Chapter 6. So a couple people asked me the questions about, you know, things like, "Hey, I was always taught that, you know, this horse was this, and this horse was that, and another horse was this, and another horse was that," so you can explain that. I think that there is, the simplest way to understand these horses is just fairly, very simply, that again, the white horse is tyranny in all of its different ways, from Christ's ascension up to the end. So every tyranny, everything of tyranny that you can think of. Another one, the red horse being murder and killing, people killing people. Just how is that happening from Christ's ascension up to the end in all of its various ways? Then you have the black horse, and then you have, which is economic imbalance, famine, things like that, in all of its various ways, from Christ's ascension up to the end. Then you have death, which is, which is death in all of its various ways, from Christ's ascension up to the end. Okay? We can all see those things that are happening. Right? So one person said, "I was taught that this horse was communism, and this horse was this, and this horse was that." Totally fine, as long as we're looking at it as saying, these things happening in all of its... in all of its various ways from Christ's ascension up to the end." Totally fine. The challenge that we always want to have is, we always want to think about, "How were the people of God that are reading Revelation, how were they understanding it?" In other words, the point is, is that John is writing these, writing this letter both for the people in his day and also for us. So the people in his day, how would they have heard it? They wouldn't have said, "Oh, this doesn't really affect us. This must be something in the future, uh, that's some, some idea called communism or something like that." Right? So they would have understood these things happening in the world in their own context. We see the same thing happening in our own context. And so it's, these are the things that are happening from Christ's ascension up to the end. Okay? So it gets a little bit worse, I guess you would say. So this is verse nine. So it's, uh, Revelation, chapter six, verse nine. "So when He opened the fifth seal, this is the Lamb, this is Jesus, you know, by this time, by the time He's opening the fifth seal, we're like, 'Stop opening the seals. No more.'" Okay? "When He opened the fifth seal, 'I saw under the altar the souls of those who had been slain for the word of God and for the witness they had borne. They cried out with a loud voice, 'O sovereign Lord, holy and true, how long before you will judge and avenge our blood on those who dwell on the earth? Then they were each given a white robe and told rest, told to rest a little longer, until the number of their fellow servants or their fellow slaves and their brothers and sisters should be complete, who were to be killed as they themselves had been.'" So again, these, this is a, this is a picture of our brothers and sisters in Christ being martyred, being killed, uh, for the sake of the gospel, for the name of Jesus, in all of its various ways, from Christ's ascension up to the end. That's all of these people that are under, that are seen under this altar and they are offering up prayers. "O Lord, how long will you not avenge our blood? And not only will you not avenge our blood, but will you also, uh, avenge those who, who are suffering because of your name?" Okay? So this is what, this is the picture that we're seeing. Okay? So now, "When He opened the sixth seal, 'I looked and behold, there was a great earthquake and the sun became black as sackcloth; the full moon became like blood; and the stars of, the, the stars of the sky fell to the earth as the fig trees shed, sheds its winter fruit when shaken by a gale. The sky vanished like a scroll that is being rolled up, and every mountain and island was removed from its place.'" This is a terrifying situation. Verse 15. "Then the kings of the earth, and the great ones, and the generals, and the rich and the powerful, and everyone slave and free..." In other words, everybody, all y'all, okay? "hid themselves in caves and among the rocks of the mountains, calling to the mountains and rocks, 'Fall on us and hide us from the face of Him who is seated on the throne and from the wrath of the Lamb.'" "From the wrath of the Lamb." Then, verse 17. "For the great day of..." underline these words. "Their wrath." "For the great day of their wrath has come, and who can stand?" So this, this sixth seal is a terrifying time. And it is, it is a time where, where you recognize, we're, I'm not in control and there is, uh, there is no, no place to hide, no place to run. That's what, that's what we're being, what's being shared with here. So question for you. Verse 17. When it says, "For the great day of their wrath," what does that mean? What does that mean? Okay? So, um, some of it says, "His wrath." So who's his? Yeah, yeah. Uh, so how many of you, it says, "Their wrath." Okay? That's the, that's the majority, right? How many of you says, "His wrath"? Anybody have a different translation? "The wrath"? Okay? So I would say to you that the most common, um, we talked a little bit about like, uh, how text variants work a couple of weeks ago, um, but I, I would encourage you that, that "their wrath," plural. What does that mean? Try you and God. Okay? So here is, uh, just like in the Old Testament, "Let us make mankind in our image." Right? Kind of that, that idea. So it's Father, Son, Holy Spirit. That's the point. Uh, so whether it's his or what we, it's clear that, that this is the wrath of the Lamb. This is the wrath of God, uh, and His righteous, uh, uh, sovereign judgment. That's what's happening. Now, the question that is, that ends here is the question, "Who can stand?" Chapter seven answers that question. Yes, Walt? Hmm? Okay? Yes? Yes? Sure? Yes. Um, let me summarize for those that, uh, couldn't, maybe couldn't hear is, um, uh, in Deuteronomy, chapter 30, when it talks about, uh, God is saying, "These things are not too difficult to you, for you to do." Right? So, um, he's saying that, uh, that, that having, having faith to, to carry them out, uh, is what He's given to you in order for you to do them. Is that, is that fair? Okay? Um, so what I've always said, and if you've ever attended any kind of, especially Old Testament Bible study with me, is that there are two kinds of people. There are unrepentant sinners and there are repentant sinners. Okay? Or to put it another way, there are repentant idolaters and there are unrepentant idolaters. Only those two kinds of people. So what happens is, in the, in, in the Old Testament especially, is, um, when things happen, when bad things happen, when my crops don't grow, what did the people of the Old Testament do? Where did they turn? They did not repent. Where did they turn? They turned to worshiping other gods. That's what they did. So, you know, come on, is that a big deal? Well, again, it's not just, "Well, they're going to this church and they can then go to this other thing." Is that really that big a deal? Well, I want you to see the, the story of the, of the Old Testament, why it's such a big deal and why it's such a big deal to God. Um, so here's what happens when you get away from God's Word. And here's what happens when you get away from being in this covenant, uh, relationship where we are repentant idolaters. We get away from that, here's what happens. So turn in your Bible to 2 Kings 23. So if you know this, this name, uh, his name is Josiah. He's, he's one of the great kings of Israel, uh, right before God said, "All right, I've had it. I'm gonna bring Babylon in and you're, they're gonna wipe you out. They're gonna, you're gonna go into exile." Josiah, he finds in the temple, uh, the Word of the Lord. And he's like, "Y'all, um, we have kind of gotten away from this." Right? "How about we go ahead and just go back to the Word?" Right? But how bad had it, had it gotten? This is how bad it got. So, so Josiah comes in, uh, uh, so verse nine. "The priests of the high places..." So these are, these are pagan worshiping. These are pagan temples, high places. "Uh, did not come up to the altar of the Lord in Jerusalem, but they ate unleavened bread among their brothers." Verse 10. "And he defiled Topheth, which is in the valley of the son of Hinnam, that one might burn his son or his daughter as an offering to Molech." That's how bad it gets. Now, does it get that bad overnight? It's a little bit, 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 to the point where now you have generations after, and they're actually sacrificing their own children to a pagan god. So the point is, is that God knows that, that those sins left, when we don't repent of those sins, that's where it leads eventually. Make sense? That's the, that's the story of, especially the Old Testament. It's our story too, is that left, when we don't repent of tho, of those sins, it leads to our own destruction. And so God, the reason why we say, "Why would, why would a loving, or why would God allow these things to happen, or why would even God cause these things? Because He loves you. Because He loves people." That's hard. I get it. Okay? So back to the question, uh, that we'll close with here, and that is, uh, chapter six, verse 17. "For the great day of their wrath has come." Who can stand? What do you think the answer to that question is? Who can stand? No one? Who said it? Followers of God. So, so here's what we're gonna see in, in chapter seven, because now we're gonna go into this chapter where it's an interlude. So it's a pause, like, we've, we've, we've just been through some really heavy stuff. Could you please stop popping seals? Because stuff's getting real bad. Right? So we're gonna have this pause and you take a deep breath in and a deep breath out. And the question that we're gonna be asking going into chapter seven is, "What, what, what's the deal with the church? What's the deal with those people who, who, who are baptized believers and who are repentant idolaters and who trust in Jesus for their salvation? What about them? What about us?" And chapter seven is going to give us this picture. Uh, so I just want you to see, because Walt, when you say, "Believers," you're right. And it's not based on what we have done, but it's based upon what Jesus has done in our place for us. Okay? So this is verse nine of chapter seven. I'm giving you a foretaste of the feast to come. Says, "After this, I looked and behold, a great multitude that no one could number, from every nation, from all tribes and peoples and languages, doing what? Standing before the throne and before the Lamb, clothed in white robes with palm branches in their hands, and crying out with a loud voice, 'Salvation belongs to our God who sits on the throne unto the Lamb.'" Because of Jesus, his, his, the point is, no matter how bad it gets, no matter how painful it is, you can stand in the midst of it all because of what Jesus has done for you in your place. Got it? That's the hope. Uh, so there's always in the midst of suffering and death and just terrible, terrible things that are happening, uh, and we can call them terrible. We can call a spade a spade. But in the midst of it all, the last word is, is gonna be a word of grace and hope and forgiveness and the presence of God saying, "Just a little while longer and I'm gonna get you through this." All right? So let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you that we have an opportunity to just wrestle with your Word as in community. And, and Lord, we look at things that are happening in our world and, and admit that a lot of these things don't make sense to us. And Father, we sometimes and a lot of times ask, "Where are you? How are you working in these things for your glory and for your kingdom's sake?" And many times, the answer to the question is not the one we want to hear. Uh, because what we want is, we want it to, to all be right, but we know that it's not gonna be right in this life. We know that you have to redeem all of it, that you are gonna make all things new. And Lord, we look forward to that. And yet we look forward to even the sufferings of this world with hope and promise, knowing that you will sustain every moment of that time. And Lord, we thank you for it. We thank you for, as chapter seven is gonna remind us, you hold back. We thank you for that, Father. And Lord, we trust you in everything. We ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you all. See you next week.